Mr. Beard.
Here.
Mr. Blevins.
Here.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby.
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp.
Here.
Mr. Ellinger.
Here.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Ms. Henson.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Mr. McCord.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Dr. Stevens.
Present.
And Mr. Stenett.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Unfortunately, we do not have a minister. So this evening, I've asked Mr. Green to provide us with an invocation again, as he ably does.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to assemble to do the people's business here. We pray that as we go into these deliberations, that we will consider those things that will be beneficial to our community. We pray that blessings upon this gathering on the council and the mayors. We pray that as they deliberate, their hearts will be lightened from all the things that worry them, so they can focus on the things that you would have them do for thy people. In the name of Christ Jesus, we thank him and pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you'll give second reading to the ordinances, please.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance changing the zone from a highway service business B three zone to a light industrial I one zone for 0.78 net, 1.12 gross acre of property, located at 990 through 992 West New Circle Road, hands-on originals. Number two, an ordinance changing the zone from a single-family residential R one D zone to a single-family residential R one E zone for 0.269 net, 0.366 gross acres of property, located at 317 Robertson Street, Derek Thomas. Number three, an ordinance amending Article one dash eleven in Article eight dash fifteen subsection D, eight dash fifteen subsection N, and eight dash fifteen subsection zero O of the zoning ordinance to change the definition of extended stay hotel and to permit extended stay hotels in the professional office P one zone. Number four, an ordinance amending Article twenty-two A, twenty-two A dash one, twenty-two A dash two of the zoning ordinance to change the name of the growth area planned unit development P U D one zone to a residential planned unit development P U D one zone, and to reduce the location and size criteria for the planned unit development P U D one zone. Number five, an ordinance accepting the bid of Mac Construction and Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $1,178,972.60 for Meadows Northland Arlington neighborhood improvements, Phase Three B, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number one fifty-five. Number six, an ordinance pursuant to ordinance number one ninety-seven, two thousand and two, adjusting the salaries of employees occupying the position of engineering technician principal, telecommunicator, telecommunicator senior, telecom supervisor, computer analyst, and equipment operator senior in the various divisions after review pursuant to the pay equity ordinance, effective retroactive to the dates described in each item, and appropriating funds pursuant to budget schedule number one fifty. Number seven, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept grant from the Knight Foundation at Bluegrass Community Foundation, which grant funds are in the amount of $4,000, are for operation of a life skills program at the Division of Youth Services, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number one fifty-three, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number eight, an ordinance amending ordinance number four dash two thousand and eight to create one position of recreation specialist senior, grade one thirteen E, in the Division of Parks and Recreation, to become effective retroactive to January ten, two thousand and eight. Number nine, an ordinance amending section three of ordinance number three dash two thousand and eight to correct an error in the salary of Kenneth Johnson, equipment operator senior, grade one oh nine N, from 9.855 hourly to 14.359 hourly, effective retroactive to January ten, two thousand and eight, and pursuant to the pay equity ordinance, adjusting the salaries of employees occupying the position of equipment operator senior in the Division of Waste Management, to become effective retroactive to October fifteen, two thousand and seven, and appropriating funds pursuant to budget schedule number one fifty-two. Number ten, an ordinance amending section twenty-three five of the Code of Ordinances, abolishing one position of police captain and creating one position of police lieutenant in the Division of Police. Number eleven, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating fund schedules number one forty-nine. And number twelve, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds remaining in F Y two thousand and eight into F Y two thousand and eight, in F Y two thousand and seven into F Y two thousand and eight, in the General Services District General Fund, using anticipated bond budget savings as the funding source as approved at the March eighteenth, two thousand and eight council work session, schedule number one fifty-four.
That completes the reading of the ordinances entitled to their second reading. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Have a motion by Councilmember Stenett, second by Councilmember McCord. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please vote aye electronically; those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby.
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp.
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Henson.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Dr. Stevens.
Aye.
And Mr. Stenett.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those ordinances are approved. We're now ready for the reading of the ordinances entitled to first reading. Madam Clerk.
Number thirteen, an ordinance accepting the bid of Garni Construction Incorporated in the amount of $11,451,451 for the North Elkhorn Forest Main Project, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number one sixty-two. Number fourteen, an ordinance accepting the bid of H M C Service Company in the amount of $33,895, and the bid of T P Mechanical Contractors in the amount of $58,550 for boiler replacements for the Phoenix Building, Government Center Annex, and Downtown Arts Center, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number one sixty-one. Number fifteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $40,000 federal funds, are for continuation of the traffic safety program for the Division of Police, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $40,000 as a local match, appropriating funds pursuant to F Y two thousand and nine, schedule number two, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number sixteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $173,458 federal funds, are for operation of the mash drop-in facility, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $17,346 to be provided by the mash drop-in operating budget appropriating funds pursuant to F Y two thousand and nine, schedule number one, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number seventeen, an ordinance amending section twenty-one five of the Code of Ordinances, abolishing two positions of plant operations supervisor senior, grade one seventeen E, and creating two positions of plant operations supervisor senior, water and air quality control, grade one eighteen E, and reclassifying the incumbents in the Division of Water and Air Quality, and appropriating funds pursuant to budget schedule number one fifty-eight. Number eighteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department of Education, Division of School, and Community Nutrition, to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $155,580 federal funds, are for the two thousand and eight summer food service program, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number one sixty-six, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Bluegrass Area Development District, to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $83,980 federal funds, are for the operation of the Senior Citizens Center in F Y two thousand and nine, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $139,390 as a local match, appropriating funds pursuant to F Y not two thousand and nine, schedule number three, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number twenty, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit the two thousand and eight consolidated plant grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept the grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $3,508,372 federal funds, are for the F Y oh nine Community Development Block Grant Program, $2,45,837, home program, $1,356,982, emergency shelter grant program, $91,408, and the American Dream Down Payment Initiative, $14,145, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $319,323 from various funding sources as local cash match, and $67,408 in kind match, appropriating funds pursuant to F Y oh nine, schedule number four, authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget, and authorizing the mayor to execute agreements for the approved plan. Number twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $23,393 federal funds, are for the purchase of the Regent Insta Mesh breadcrumb deployable 2.4 gigahertz Wi-Fi wireless system for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number one sixty, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number twenty-two, an ordinance amending section twenty-one five of the Code of Ordinances, creating one position of municipal engineer senior, grade one nineteen E, and amending section twenty-two five of the Code of Ordinances, creating one temporary position of municipal engineer senior, grade one nineteen E, and one temporary position of municipal engineer senior part-time, grade one nineteen E, both for a term of four years, ending April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve, all within the Division of Water and Air Quality, and appropriating funds pursuant to budget schedule number one fifty-seven. Number twenty-three, an ordinance amending section twenty-two five of the Code of Ordinances, creating two positions of social worker senior part-time, grade one thirteen E, and abolishing one position of social worker senior, grade one thirteen E, and reclassifying the incumbent in the Division of Adult Services, and appropriating funds pursuant to budget schedule number one fifty-nine. Number twenty-four, an ordinance amending section five dash one of the Code of Ordinances to adopt the current edition of the Kentucky Uniform Statewide Mandatory Building Code and the Kentucky Residential Code, and to provide that the Division of Building Inspection is under the general supervision of the Commissioner of Public Works and Development. Number twenty-five, an ordinance repealing section ten dash fourteen point one of the Code of Ordinances to delete provisions establishing a farmer's market. Number twenty-six, an ordinance amending section three and four of ordinance number thirty-four dash two thousand and eight to provide that the thirty percent discount program established therein shall be available to citizens receiving social security disability benefits who are otherwise qualified under this section to limit eligibility to only one discount program and to correct a clerical error. Number twenty-seven, an ordinance requiring that no building permit for a new structure or expansion of any existing structure by more than twenty-five percent in floor area shall be issued for any structure on property abutting Newtown Pike between West Main Street and the Urban Service Area Boundary, unless the plans submitted in conjunction therewith are in accordance with a particular landscape profile, requiring that each property owner be responsible for any and all landscaping and fencing required to be installed upon his property under the terms of the ordinance, requiring that whenever issuance of a building permit requires prior approval of a development plan or subdivision plat, that the requirements of this ordinance be included on such development plan or subdivision plat, and authorizing the Corridors Committee on Recommendation from the Division of Building Inspection to approve an alternative landscape plan if the topography of land, existing utility easements, and/or other unique factors would not permit the property owner to comply with the requirements of this ordinance. Number twenty-eight, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Kentucky American Water Company in the amount of $5,000 for the reforest, the Bluegrass Project, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number one sixty-five. Number twenty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the Division of Enhanced 911 to purchase two 911 routers and associated equipment, licenses, software, and support from Solocom Technologies Incorporated, a sole-source provider for implementation of a regional 911 system at a cost not to exceed $195,835, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number one sixty-four. And number thirty, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating fund schedule number one fifty-six.
Thank you very much. That concludes the reading of the ordinances entitled to first reading. If there are no motions, we'll proceed to Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to suspend the rules, so that I can do a second reading, please, on number twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to suspend the rules for purposes of granting a second reading to item twenty-five. If there are no further motions, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of suspending the rules to give second reading to item twenty-five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number twenty-five for second reading, and ordinance repealing section ten dash fourteen point one of the Code of Ordinances to delete provisions establishing a farmer's market.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Have a motion by Councilmember Gordon, second by Councilmember Beard, to approve item twenty-five. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving item twenty-five, please indicate by voting aye electronically; those opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby.
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp.
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. Henson.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Dr. Stevens.
Aye.
And Mr. Stenett.
Thank you very much. That ordinance is approved. Madam Clerk, if you'll give reading to the resolutions entitled a second reading.
Resolution number one, a resolution accepting the bid of V S A in the amount of $32,964 for production switcher for G T V three. Number two, a resolution accepting the bid of Vogel Pole Fire Equipment, establishing a price contract for heavy-duty power rescue tools for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number three, a resolution accepting the bid of A and A Safety Incorporated, establishing a price contract for hydraulic U S A R rescue tools, H D, for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number four, a resolution accepting the bid of Choice Equipment LLC, establishing a price contract for automotive lifts for the Division of Fleet Services. Number five, a resolution accepting the bid of Central Civil Company, establishing a price contract for raised pavement marker installation for the Division of Traffic Engineering. Number six, a resolution accepting the bid of emergency equipment, establishing a price contract for high-pressure airlifting bag system and accessories for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number seven, a resolution accepting the bid of G and K Services, establishing a price contract for uniform rental for the Division of Fleet Services. Number eight, a resolution accepting the bid of Superior Demolition Incorporated in the amount of $20,400 for demolition of residential structures for the Division of Community Development. Number nine, a resolution accepting the bid of Easy Go Textron in the amount of $310,910 for golf carts for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number ten, a resolution accepting the bid of Tim Garnet LLC in the amount of $21,500 for Jacobson Park new accessible restroom. Number eleven, a resolution accepting the bid of Thorobilt Construction in the amount of $29,875 for the Gratz Park kitchen roof replacement. Number twelve, a resolution accepting the bids of Claunch Construction LLC, G and G Paving and Construction Incorporated, L M Asphalt Partners Limited, doing business as A T S Construction, Randall Davies Construction Company, the Allen Company Incorporated, Tom Chestnut Excavation and Construction LLC, and Woodall Construction Company Incorporated, establishing unit price contracts for paved trail construction for the Division of Engineering. Number thirteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with Hope Center Incorporated for an increase of $460 for a total of $25,180 in emergency shelter grant funds for operation of an emergency and transitional shelter for men, at a cost not to exceed an additional $460. Number fourteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a general warranty deed for the property located at 405 Shawnee Avenue from James and Janet Easthead for the Meadows Northland Arlington Phase Three B improvements, and authorizing payment in the amount of $53,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number fifteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a general warranty deed for the property located at 406 Shawnee Avenue for D two H Investments LLC, for the Meadows Northland Arlington Phase Three B improvements, and authorizing a payment in the amount of $53,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number sixteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from the Jasmine County Emergency Management Agency of twenty-four emergency scene ahead signs with base and carrying case for use at the Division of Environmental and Emergency Management at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number seventeen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Boy Scout Troop nine eleven Incorporated, $1,000, Radcliffe Marlboro Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $578, Doyle and Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $420, and Winver Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $600 for the Office of the Urban County Council, at a cost not to exceed the sums stated. Number eighteen, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Kenzie Gleason Planner Senior, grade one seventeen E, sixteen ninety-one eighty-four biweekly, in the Division of Planning, effective March seventeen, two thousand and eight; John Sailor Arborist Technician, grade one twelve N, eighteen point nine two two hourly, in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry, effective March seventeen, two thousand and eight; ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Philip Steifel Computer Systems Manager Senior, grade one twenty E, in the Division of Computer Services, effective April one, two thousand and eight; Wally Barker Human Resources Manager, grade one nineteen E, in the Division of Human Resources, effective March third, two thousand and eight; Wilma Williams Staff Assistant Senior, grade one oh eight N, in the Division of Police, effective February twenty, two thousand and eight; Scott Bitner Public Service Worker, grade one oh six N, in the Division of Parks and Recreation, effective April one, two thousand and eight; Kathleen O'Neil Administrative Specialist, grade one ten N, in the Division of Historic Preservation, effective March seventeen, two thousand and eight; Aaron Back Golf Course Clubhouse Attendant, grade one oh six N, in the Division of Parks and Recreation, effective April one, two thousand and eight; approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Carissa Kelsey Family Support Worker, grade one twelve N, sixteen point three four one hourly, in the Division of Family Services, effective February twenty-eight, two thousand and eight; approving the unclassified civil service appointment to the Office of the Urban County Council, Mary Tackett, Aid to Council, grade zero 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 E, one thousand eight oh seven sixty-nine, biweekly, in the Office of the Urban County Council, effective February twenty-fifth, two thousand and eight. Number nineteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $187,500 federal funds, and are for the continuation of the street sales drug enforcement project. Number twenty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $35,000 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds, from the Law Enforcement Service Fee Program, and are for police officer overtime hours for a traffic alcohol patrol program. Twenty-one, a resolution accepting the proposal of express personnel services in the amount of $20.15 per hour, not to exceed $30,000, for an inventory warehouse specialist to maintain current inventory and control system for metropolitan medical response systems-related equipment purchases. Twenty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number two, final to the contract with Lynn Co. Excavation Incorporated for Seventh Street and Old Railroad Improvement Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $3,952.23, from $249,130.97 to $253,083.20. Number twenty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Ratio Architects Incorporated for a central sector small area plan, at a cost not to exceed $110,000. Twenty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Project Lifesaver Incorporated, $825, and Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Bluegrass Incorporated, $825 for the Office of the Urban County Council, at a cost not to exceed the sums stated. Twenty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Shenault Road Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $4,999 for a public project for the Office of the Urban County Council, at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Twenty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an encroachment agreement with Cincinnati, New Orleans, and Texas Pacific Railway Company for the North Elkhorn wastewater project, at a cost not to exceed $24,625. Number twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a consulting services agreement with Metaformers Incorporated for implementation services for People Soft Software Phase Two, at a cost not to exceed And number twenty-eight, a resolution making a declaration of official intent with respect to reimbursement from subsequent borrowings of temporary advances made for capital expenditures for implementation of Phase Two of the People Soft Software Star's expansion in an approximate amount of $5,500,000.
Thank you very much. That concludes the reading of the ordinances entitled to their second reading. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion from Councilmember Ellinger, and a second from Councilmember Stenett, to approve those resolutions receiving their second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving those resolutions, please indicate by saying aye; those opposed, by voting aye electronically. I apologize, it's been a long day. Those opposed, vote nay electronically, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby.
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp.
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Henson.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Dr. Stevens.
Aye.
And Mr. Stenett. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are approved. Madam Clerk, if you'll proceed with the resolutions, reading the resolutions entitled to first reading.
Resolution number twenty-nine, a resolution accepting the bid of Ford Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $99,500 for Wildwood Park and Johnson Heights Park Bridge Replacements. Number thirty, a resolution accepting the bid of Meyer Midwest Incorporated in the amount of $296,835.50 for Elizabeth Street drainage improvements. Number thirty-one, a resolution accepting the bid of premium pressure washing in the amount of $21,932 for pressure washing garages. Thirty-two, a resolution accepting the bids of Davis H Elliott Construction Company Incorporated and Aero Electric Company Incorporated, establishing price contracts for inductive loop vehicle detection and installation for the Division of Traffic Engineering. Number thirty-three, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Services, establishing a price contract for janitorial services for the Gainesway Police Road Call, Powell Empowerment, and Youth Centers. Thirty-four, a resolution accepting the bid of R and L Cleaning Services, establishing a price contract for janitorial services for the Coleman House. Thirty-five, a resolution accepting the bids of G and G Paving and Construction Incorporated, L M Asphalt Partners Limited, doing business as A T S Construction, Randall Davies Construction Incorporated, the Allen Company Incorporated, Tom Chestnut Excavation and Construction LLC, Gooch Construction Incorporated, Conhurst LLC, A S L Excavation Incorporated, Lighthouse Plumbing LLC, Lynn Co. Excavation, Jason Tate Contractor Incorporated, Todd Johnson Constructing Incorporated, and Bluegrass Contracting Corporation, establishing unit price contracts for construction for the Division of Engineering. A resolution accepting the bid of the Walker Company of Kentucky Incorporated, establishing a price contract for operation of the construction and demolition debris landfill. Thirty-seven, a resolution authorizing the Division of Fire and Emergency Services to purchase broadband communications equipment and related facilities for Natural Information Systems Incorporated, a sole-source provider for the mobile command post, at a cost not to exceed $25,225. A resolution approving the granting of an inducement to Braden Partners L P, doing business as Pacific Pulmonary Services, pursuant to the Kentucky Jobs Development Act, by allowing all of its employees whose jobs have been deemed by the Kentucky Jobs Development Authority to have been created as a result of Braden Partners L P, doing business as Pacific Pulmonary Services, relocating its operations to the Fayette County, and who are paying the Service and Technology Job Creation Assessment Fee to have their occupational license fee reduced by one-fifth of the assessment fee, for a term of not longer than ten years from the activation date established by Braden Partners L P, doing business as Pacific Pulmonary Services, subject to the limitations contained in the Kentucky Jobs Development Act, and taking other related action. other related action. Number 39. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with Blackburn Correctional Complex for the provision of emergency response assistance to Blackburn Correctional Complex at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 40. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Bluegrass Comprehensive Care Center for Substance Abuse Treatment for Adolescents at a cost not to exceed $80,000. Number 41. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Lexington Center Corporation for renovation of the Lexington Opera House at a cost not to exceed $425,000. 42. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Glendover Elementary PTA Incorporated, $1,100, and Young Marines, Captain Reginald Underwood, Unit $875, for the Office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sums stated. 43. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute this certificate of consideration and to accept a general and warranty deed from William H. Flannery for the property located at 400 Meadow Park for the Meadows-Northland-Arlington Phase 3B Improvements Project at a cost not to exceed $66,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. 44. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation of 90 loads of field dirt valued at $4,050 for use in various parks locations.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Blevins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend item number 45 on the docket under first reading resolutions to correct the division under permanent civil service appointments of Sharon Bradley, Customer Service Specialist, Grade 110N, and Candace Byrd, Customer Service Specialist, Grade 110N, to the Division of Government Communications. So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Blevins and a second by Councilmember Myers to amend item 45 as stated. Any discussion? Those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 45, as amended. A resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Cheryl Cross, Administrative Specialist, Grade 110N, 19.544 hourly, in the Division of Revenue, effective April 14, 2008. Freddie Pinsinger, Equipment Operator Senior, Grade 109N, 14.359 hourly, in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry, effective March 31, 2008. Michelle Nipper, Equipment Operator Senior, Mitchell Nipper, excuse me, Equipment Operator Senior, Grade 109N, 14.359 hourly, in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry, effective April 14, 2008. David Price, Laboratory Supervisor, Grade 114E, 208392, biweekly, in the Division of Water and Air Quality, effective April 14, 2008. Jonathan Cole, Electrical Instrumentation Technician, Grade 113N, 19.318 hourly, in the Division of Water and Air Quality, effective April 14, 2008. Ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Tamara Otifur, Staff Assistant Senior, Grade 108N, in the Division of Police, effective March 17, 2008. Timothy Smith, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, in the Division of Parks and Recreation, effective April 15, 2008. Sharon Bradley, Customer Service Specialist, Grade 110N, in the Division of Government Communications, effective April 1, 2008. Candace Byrd, Customer Service Specialist, Grade 110N, in the Division of Government Communications, effective April 1, 2008. Judy Higgins, Revenue Compliance Auditor, Grade 114E, in the Division of Revenue, effective March 17, 2008. Robert Ryaney, Revenue Compliance Auditor Supervisor, Grade 116E, in the Division of Revenue, effective March 17, 2008. Susan Bowie, Revenue Compliance Auditor Senior, Grade 115E, in the Division of Revenue, effective March 17, 2008. Linda Leonard, Administrative Specialist Senior, Grade 112N, in the Division of Revenue, effective March 17, 2008. Joseph Davis, Public Service Worker Senior, Grade 107N, in the Division of Parks and Recreation, effective April 29, 2008. Ratifying the probationary sworn appointments of Kevin Goldie, Police Sergeant, Grade 315N, 26.388 hourly, in the Division of Police, effective March 14, 2008. Gary Senate, Police Lieutenant, Grade 317E, 20075246, biweekly, in the Division of Police, effective March 14, 2008. Ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of David Aties, Fire Major, Grade 318E, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective March 17, 2008. Harold Miracle, Fire Captain, Grade 316N, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective March 17, 2008. Christopher Whitehead, Fire Lieutenant, Grade 315N, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective March 17, 2008. Approving leave of absences for Tammy Hayden, Telecommunicator, Grade 111N, in the Division of Enhanced 911. Request a 30-day council approval leave without pay from March 27, 2008, to April 25, 2008. Kenneth Kennedy, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, in the Division of Waste Management, requests a 30-day council approval leave without pay from March 21, 2008, to April 19, 2008. Shelley Bendelodin, Preparedness Coordinator, Grade 113N, in the Division of Environmental and Emergency Management, requests a 90-day council approval leave without pay from April 25, 2008, to July 23, 2008. Arnold Sidney, Custodial Worker, Grade 102N, in the Division of Building Maintenance and Construction, requests a 30-day council approval leave without pay from April 1, 2008, to April 30, 2008. Wanda Webb, Staff Assistant Senior, Grade 108N, in the Division of Engineering, requests a 90-day council approval leave without pay from April 1, 2008, to June 29, 2008. Number 46. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $52,417 federal funds and are for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the Division of Police and the Fayette County Sheriff's Office. Number 47. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Division of Forestry to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $5,000 federal funds and are for the 2008 Kentucky Urban and Community Forestry Program for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. 48. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $1,430,000 federal funds and are for continuation of the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program. Number 49. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $480,000 federal funds under the 2008 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program and are for a medium-duty rescue vehicle to replace the current Rescue One vehicle for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number 50. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the American Water Company and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $10,000 and are for the restoration of the White Oak Greenway in McConnell's Trace subdivision. Number 51. A resolution authorizing the Division of Enhanced 911 to purchase 911 channel bank and routing equipment from Adtran Incorporated, a sole source provider for implementation of a regional 911 system at a cost not to exceed $23,272. Number 52. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a contract for environmental services with Bluegrass Environmental Incorporated for remedial underground storage tank work for the cost to be reimbursed by the Kentucky Division of Waste Management. Number 53. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a network services contract with Insight Kentucky Partners, 2LP, for provision of fiber optic connection for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services at a cost not to exceed $11,400 per year for a three-year period, subject to sufficient funds being appropriated. Number 54. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for installation of a masked armed system pole at the intersection of Star Shude Parkway and Liberty Road at a cost not to exceed $48,406.27. Number 55. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Isaac Scott Hathaway Museum Incorporated, $1,750, NYMCA of Central Kentucky, $1,500 for the Office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number 56. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Woodfield Homes Association Incorporated, $2,489.6 for a public project for the Office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number 57. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an encroachment agreement with the Fayette County Board of Education in the right-of-way at 460 and 461 Spring Hill Drive. 58. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an encroachment agreement with G&amp;J Pepsi-Cola Bottlers Incorporated in the right-of-way at 111 Trafton Avenue. 59. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Farm and Garden Market Cooperative Association Incorporated, doing business as Lexington Farmers Market for the management of Lexington Farmers Market in downtown Lexington. Number 60. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Kentucky State Police to participate in the Kentucky Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 61. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amended agreement and an amended deed of permanent easement with Keeneland Association Incorporated to provide sanitary sewer service to additional facilities owned by Keeneland Association Incorporated. Number 62. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number two to the contract with Todd Johnson Contracting Incorporated for Hamburg Force Main, increasing the contract price by the sum of $8,020 from $375,390.59 to $383,397.79. Number 63. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association of Computer Supplies for the use at the Division of Police Crimes Against Children Unit at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 64. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of, authorizing and directing the Department of Law to institute condemnation proceedings in Fayette Circuit Court to obtain permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements at 1636 O. Paris Road for the North Elkhorn Forest Main Project. Number 65. A resolution authorizing and directing the Department of Law to institute condemnation proceedings in Fayette Circuit Court to obtain permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements at 1645 O. Paris Road for the North Elkhorn Forest Main Project. Number 66. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 276 Derby Drive from James Deaton for the North Limestone Stormwater Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $107,300 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 67. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 280 Derby Drive from Tommy and Carol Warner for the North Limestone Stormwater Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $130,200 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 68. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 284 Derby Drive from Roger Dale and Sandra Collins for the North Limestone Stormwater Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $108,700 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 69. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 288 Derby Drive from Lionel J. Oceon for the North Limestone Stormwater Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $99,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 70. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 905 North Limestone from Anna F. Towbridge, formerly known as, also known as Anna F. Miller, for the North Limestone Stormwater Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $81,700 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 71. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 907 North Limestone from Anthony R. and Karen A. Collins for the North Limestone Stormwater Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $79,200 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. 72. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 909 North Limestone from Robert and Heather Walter for the North Limestone Stormwater Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $99,200 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 73. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 1001 North Limestone from Pedro and Magdalena Armball for the North Limestone Stormwater Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $71,700 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. And number 74. A resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Council requesting that the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority issue health care system revenue bonds in one or more series for the benefit of Kentucky Easter Seal Society Incorporated, doing business as Cardinal Hill Health Care System, a Kentucky nonprofit, non-stock charitable corporation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes the reading of those resolutions entitled to first reading. Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules in order to request the second reading on number 59.
Are there others?
Mayor, number 30.
Councilmember McCord.
Yes, Mayor. Suspend the rules to read 46, 47, 48, 49, and 50. And to Councilmember Stenit's request as to why, it's because that encompasses over $2 million of grant money that we are applying for. In these economic times, I think it's important that we get as much out there as possible. And I would like to request number 74 as well, and that's the expansion of Cardinal Hill, which is one of the largest economic development opportunities we've had. It creates over 200 jobs, and I think it's worth moving on and giving our ringing endorsement.
Any others? Is there a second? I have a second from Councilmember Lane to suspend the rules, and as I understand it, the motion to suspend the rules is to give resolutions 30, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 59, and 74 their second reading. Those in favor of giving second reading to those ordinances, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Resolution number 30 for second reading. A resolution accepting the bid of Meyer Midwest Incorporated in the amount of $296,835.50 for Elizabeth Street Drainage Improvements. Number 46. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $52,417 federal funds and are for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the Division of Police and the Fayette County Sheriff's Office. 47. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Division of Forestry and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $5,000 federal funds and are for the 2008 Kentucky Urban and Community Forestry Program for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 48. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $1,430,000 federal funds and are for continuation of the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program. 49. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $480,000 federal funds under the 2008 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program and are for the medium-duty rescue vehicle to replace the current Rescue One vehicle for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number 50. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the American Water Company and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $10,000 and are for restoration of the White Oak Greenway in McConnell's Trace subdivision. Number 59. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Farm and Garden Market Cooperative Association Incorporated, doing business as Lexington Farmers Market for the management of the Lexington Farmers Market in downtown Lexington. And number 74. A resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Council requesting that the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority issue health care system revenue bonds in one or more series for the benefit of Kentucky Easter Seal Society Incorporated, doing business as Cardinal Hill Health Care System, a Kentucky nonprofit, non-stock charitable corporation.
Thank you very much. The floor is open for motion to approve those resolutions. I had a motion from Councilmember Myers and a second, I think, from Councilmember Gordon to approve those resolutions. Any discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, indicate by voting nay electronically. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby.
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp.
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. Hinson.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Dr. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Stenit.
Those resolutions are approved. You have several communications for information purposes only, so that brings us down to announcements. Does any council member have announcements? I see none, so that will take us on to public comment. I have five individuals who have indicated a desire to address the council this evening. The first is Joel Little. Mr. Little, if you'll step to the podium. You'll have three minutes to address the council. And next is Rachelle Clay. Ms. Clay?
Thank you. If you'll stand by.
Yes, my name is Joel Little. I live at six eight seven State Highway one seven seven three, Grayson, Kentucky. For about a year now, we've been working on a project. It's called Kentucky Appalachian Outdoors Adventures. I hope you all have gotten a brochure. And what it is, it's a Kentucky tourism program that we are trying to develop and been working on. It has gone a long ways in the past month with four of our cities, Ashland, Grayson, Moorhead, and Vanceburg, where we built the first camp. What it is, is it's dedicated to disabled American veterans in the United States. And what we're going to do is we're going to advertise to them through Rob Lewis, which is, as you all know, the national headquarters for the veterans here in Coles Springs, Kentucky. I've been with him. And we're going to offer vacations, free, to disabled American veterans and their families. We're going to set up camps all up and down the Appalachian Valley and even go statewide like it's like now. I met with, I was called yesterday, day before yesterday, and Lieutenant Governor Mazzardo, and he found out that I was coming up here to talk to y'all, and he wanted me to come over and see him this morning, so I went over there at nine o'clock this morning, and I met with, I got so many people. Bill Berger, which is in charge of all the tourism in the state of Kentucky. And he sat down with us, and as you all know, tourism is, are going to be our huge new thing in the state of Kentucky. And they're developing a new trail that's going to go east to west, north to south to bring the tourism here. And I sat down with them this morning, and they want to combine our two promotions. What is, what ours is, is once we bring the disabled veterans to the camps, which is going to be, probably looks like about twenty camps up and down just the Appalachian Valley. We'll be probably be doing anywhere from twenty-five to a hundred disabled veterans and their families in each camp. So that's going to put us with over a thousand a week disabled veterans coming to the area to enjoy all the adventures that we're going to take them to. What you do is you come to our camps. It will be complete camps with everything, specially programmed for the kids, because we want them to have fun, and the disabled American veterans to have a free vacation. Sometimes, some of our adventures won't include the kids, hunting, keenling, and other adventures like that. So we're going to have wonderful things for them right there at the camp, swimming, basketball, everything for them to have a great adventure too. A lot of times, they will go with adventures. I'm going to give you an example. Carter Caves Adventure. What we will do, you come to our camp. It's going to be during the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, probably. You'll come there, and when you get there, we will take over. Everything is free. We'll put you in your rooms, feed you. Probably the next day or the day after that, we have set up the Carter Caves Adventure. We will load you in whatever transportation that we have, and we'll take you to Carter Caves. We'll turn you over to the Carter Caves people. They will take you on your adventure. While you're with there, we will videotape this adventure.
Mr. Little, your time has expired. If you could kind of wrap up. I think there's a question or two.
Okay.
Councilmember Gordon.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you so much. This sounds like a really terrific thing to do. My question is, if someone wanted to donate money to this.
This is a civil one C three corporation.
It is a not-for-profit, and so do you want to say on the air, since we're televised, where someone might do that? Is there a?
We haven't set our website up. We're still waiting on our non-profit status from the IRS. But what I really want, really need to get out is, once we video this tape, it's going on a national television network as a tourism advertisement, and somebody will come up and say, you do not have to be a disabled American veteran to enjoy the tourism adventures in the state of Kentucky. Contact information website, which brings us to our tourism.
Okay. If you'll get that information to me or to the mayor or the vice mayor, once you get it, we can have GTV three put that information up.
Well, we're probably going to set up with KET, and I've got so many, like I said, people that are behind us, Mitch McConnell, everybody, so I just wanted to come and introduce myself and bring you all the program. And we're setting up right now our board of directors, and if there's anyone that you all would love, I mean, we'd love to have, Steve Gilmore, mayor of Ashland, George Steele of Grayson, all on our board of directors. We're just now setting them up. Mitch McConnell is working with us on that. Senator Blevins, Rocky Atkins. So I just wanted to come introduce myself and for y'all, hopefully, all the whole state of Kentucky is going to.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your coming this evening. Ms. Clay, if you'll step to the podium and give us your address, you'll have three minutes. And Mr. McCarthy, you'll be next.
Mayor Newberry, Vice Mayor Gray, and Honorable Councilmembers, my name is Rachelle Clay, and I am the president of the Civil Service Employee Association this year. And I'm coming on behalf of our civil service employees to express our sincerest appreciation for your hard work, your perseverance, and your attention to detail and wording this year. As career employees, we are especially grateful for the particular attention to the management audit and the mayor's proposed budget, as this threatens the job of some of our employees. Civil service, as civil service employees, we conduct Lexington's daily functioning jobs as well as assist our first responders day and night. Citizens care not where the sewage flows, where the garbage goes, how the pothole feels, or the light, traffic light changes. They care not who answers the phone as long as it gets answered. They care not, because it is our job, to ensure that it is not a problem. And if it becomes one, it is our job to respond to it diligently. We care for the fleet, the street, the potholes, the snow, the payroll, the parks, and the phones, and in essence, the whole of Lexington. It is not our job, it is our career, and as citizens, it is one that we respect. As employees, we respect equality, patience, and attention to all, and support while respectfully providing the same to you. As employees and residents, we are sometimes quick to contact you with a grievance or concern and then remiss to respond with our appreciation. Therefore, we stand before you tonight, wishing to ensure that we, that you are expressively thanked for your work and aware of our attention to detail as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clay. Mr. McCarthy.
Your Honor and members of the council, I wish to ask you, first of all, to not let anyone sabotage or close or narrow any of our downtown streets, not ever. The day after my last appearance in front of this council, there was an article in the paper saying that someone at the Civic Center once again is wanting to rip out that piece of Vine Street in front of the building. I hope I don't have to refight the same war all over again. But also, there's much talk about a developer wanting to get refunds of his future property tax, to tear down a whole block of buildings and build back taller buildings. I think that tax increment financing is supposed to be for public infrastructure, not for rebates to the developers, and you should not subsidize developers, period. Not any, not downtown, not anywhere else. If something has to be subsidized to make it work financially, then it's really not feasible, and they probably shouldn't be doing it. But if somebody does wish to tear down all the existing buildings to build back taller ones, please make them set the new taller buildings back a little further from the sidewalk and leave some room for widening the streets. I especially think that Upper Street between Main and Vine should definitely be widened at least one lane, and Limestone between Vine and Main may also need another lane, considering the traffic I saw earlier this evening. By the way, I will say that over, since the last time I was here, I have seen worse traffic jams in other jurisdictions than we have here, which sort of just means it is entirely possible for things to get worse if we cram in more people and don't build the infrastructure to keep up with them. Also, on one occasion, when a street was closed off to vehicles and only pedestrians were let in, I actually got stuck in a pedestrian jam. That tells me automobiles are not necessarily the real problem. The real problem is trying to cram too many people into too small of a space.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Cobb, you'll step to the podium. You'll have three minutes. And then Mr. Keston. Thank you.
Peace and love to the council. I think it was Shakespeare said that life is a tale told by an idiot full of sound and fury signifying nothing. As we approach the future days, let us tell a true story, include everybody, because whatever we try to build, whatever we plan, if we don't let everybody be involved from the bottom to the top, it ain't going to stand. It's been done before, it's been tried before. I done tried to build something. It'd be suicide if I tried to shine shoes and not include the mayor. We need everybody to stand tall in Lexington, because we're going to take the city, the world by storm. Shoo-shine VIP. Peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Keston, if you'll give us your address, you'll have three minutes, please.
Mayor Newberry, Vice Mayor Gray, and council members, I've been told by Dr. David Stevens that he wants to put sidewalks all over Lexington and particularly down Tates Creek Road. We live at thirty-two oh five Tates Creek, the right side going south between Robin and Lansdowne. Each lot is at least three quarters of an acre or larger. Every yard is landscaped, lawns are cut regularly, the houses are fifty years old or more but are kept in mint condition. This area with the grass island looks like the country, not the city, and we don't want sidewalks. Twenty-nine out of thirty people signed a petition five years ago that we presented to David Stevens, and Linda Gordon was there, and Isabel Yates was there, and we asked David to drop his anti-voter, anti-taxpayer idea, and finally Isabel Yates, as vice mayor, prevailed and just said, David, it's a dead issue. It has laid dead for five years, with the country up to its ears in debt for two wars that may go on for years, and with the city needing four hundred and seventy million dollars for water and sewer problems, David has applied to the federal government for a grant for sidewalks nobody wants in my neighborhood and nobody wants to fix and shovel in the wintertime. I believe David proposed and council accepted an excellent idea to resolve the water and sewer problem with a fee based on asphalt, cement, and rooftops. It's completely fair, because the biggest landowners will pay the largest amount. But these new sidewalks will create more runoff, more floods, for the land-owning taxpayers. It is contrary to what you're attempting to do with the fee. Cow is an eighty-year-old widow to shovel snow. When some of us are in Florida in the wintertime, must we check the Weather Channel every day to hire somebody to shovel our sidewalk or be penalized with a fine or litigation if someone should fall and get hurt? When I supported a sidewalk, when I suggested a sidewalk in front of David Stevens' house on the island, he said there isn't enough room. This is false. The city built sidewalks on Sherman Avenue, where my in-laws lived for over fifty years in front of narrower lots and with houses closer to the street than the high-rent district David lives in.
Mr. Keston, you have about ten seconds left.
I have ten seconds? Okay. My councilman, Julian Beard, opposes this. Linda has said she doesn't want sidewalks in front of her house, and David absolutely thinks it's great for us, but not for him. So how about we put a boardwalk behind David's house, and we can all promenade along the lake on Sunday afternoon and wave to his wife, his pretty wife, check out his nice back.
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, his time is voluntary, and he needs to.
Okay. I think you get the picture.
I think we do.
The idea is idiotic.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by councilmember Lane and a second by councilmember Crosby. Those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you.